Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of September 11th, 2023. I'd like to open the meeting. This is quite a day in the history of the United States. I'd like to have a moment of silence for those folks that lost their life. Out of respect to them. Thank you. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on September 19th, 2023 at 10:30. And I try to tell everyone 10:30 means an approximate time. That's when they deal with the planning items. So it could be later than that or earlier if they did get to it. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are in the back of the room, and you can sign those up during the meeting. If you aren't applicant, you do not need to fill out a speaker request form. Roll call. Kevin's not going to be here till 10 o'clock. Other than that, we're all present. Approval of the August 28th, 2023 meeting minutes. And I did have that one change on 12th seconded. Was the word seconded was missing at the bottom of the page on 12. I had circled actually the last full paragraph. Seconded by Coleman. Thank you. Any other recommendations for clerical errors in the minutes? Everyone have an opportunity to review them, and if so, the Chair would address a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes of the August 28th meeting as corrected.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the August 28th, 2023 minutes with the one correction. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Same goes for the agenda. Have you had an opportunity to review the agenda that was published in your packet for this meeting? If so, the Chair would address a motion to approve that agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda in our packet per the meeting for the meeting of September 11th, 2023. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brittany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Maliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from the agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1318 for Rochford Community Club to review a community center in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 1318 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1725 for Donald Wachowski. Lisa Lozelle is the agent to review one pole barn and three greenhouse structures on one lot, and to review one pole barn structure on another lot, and to allow one pole barn structure to remain on one of the lots when the principal structure is removed from the property in the future. This all is in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 1725 to the September 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1827 for John and Vicky Hansen to review a recreational vehicle to be used no more than 180 calendar days, and to also allow a carport to cover the recreational vehicle and a deck in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 1827 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 2113 for Heath Freeman to review living in an existing residence while building a new single-family residence, and to allow the existing residence to remain as a ranch hand residence in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the review of conditional use permit CU 2113 with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU 2138 for David and Nancy Miller to review food trucks to be parked and operated on the subject property in a highway service district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 2138 as the use was never established and the applicant no longer owns the property. And finally, item eight is plan unit development overlay review PU 1901 for Brink Constructors, Inc., BCI Properties LLC, and Zane Brink is the agent to review an apprenticeship training facility for linemen of Brink Construction and a plan unit development overlay, and staff recommends to continue the review of plan unit development overlay PU 19-01 to the September 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Brittany. Does the staff desire to have any item pulled from the consent?
No, not at this time.
Is there any pull recommendations that come from the Planning Commission this morning? From the audience? Anyone in the audience want one of those items that's read? We do deal with them as one vote per the staff's recommendation. Hearing none. Chair to address a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
Take it.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar per staff's recommendations. Items three through eight. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number nine.
Megan Telmich, Planner. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit CU 23-30, and is to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and owners are Jack and Catherine Eggie. This is located at 13025 Pine Cliff Drive. It is 2.43 acres. The current zoning is suburban residential. There is no flood hazard on the area. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit CU 23-30 to the September 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting on request from the applicant. She originally was not able to make this meeting date, but she did manage to make it out in case there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Megan on this? Does anyone here in the audience hear to speak on this item? I don't have any speaker requests. Thank you. Any staff, I mean from the commission, have a question for Megan on this? Might as well put a motion on the table.
I move.
Okay, both of you moved. We're going to make Karen moved and Kevin seconded. And I assume you're moving to per staff's recommendation. Thank you, Karen. It's been moved and seconded per staff's recommendation to continue this item CU 23-30 to the September 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 10.
Good morning. Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. Item number 10 is a conditional use permit CU 23-31 to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant owner is Michael and Mary Ann Bourbon. The local contact is Michael Riley. The property is located at 23913 South Rockerville Road. It is 8.74 acres zoned agriculture district. There's no special flood hazard on the property. Um, let's see. Through the interdepartmental review process, only one thing was noted from the county highway department. When the property was originally established, the driveway did not, or the property owner at that time did not obtain an approach permit, so the property owner now doesn't need to do that. They have the information, and they will be working with the highway department to obtain that. That is one of the conditions that they have that done prior to renting the property out. And that's about it. The address is now posted, so that's not an issue either. The local contact is in the audience if you have questions.
Questions for Kelsey? I've got one. I got it lost in following the phone numbers through the things. I actually read those because our Washington person has a South Dakota number, and then the local contacts got a Washington-based number. If you go back and forth, how are you going to keep track of those?
Oh, you'll have to ask the local contact. I'm not sure.
Okay. It just really threw me for a loop. I thought they had them wrong at first, and then I looked over and I saw that the local contact actually listed the number as an area code that was out of state. And then when I got over to one of the other applications, it was on the same, so I assumed that had to be correct, but then I couldn't figure out then why are the people that are out of state with the local number? So I, sure, you have to come up and introduce yourself. You're the applicant?
No, I'm the local contact.
Okay, thank you. You have to introduce yourself just for the record.
Michael Riley.
Thank you, Michael.
I have a Colorado address because we moved here from two years ago, and the owner got his cell phone when he was here, when he bought the property. So he has, he lives in Topeka, Kansas.
So it's all accurate on these apps. I thought somebody was dyslexic or something helping you fill out the app the way it was all over. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Michael. I had no other question. It just struck me as odd because I bet I circled it six different times through the application here. I'm being too picky. Thank you, Kelsey, for your consideration. Any other questions for Kelsey? Anything else on this that you'd care to explore as a commission? If not, the Chair would take a motion.
I move approval.
Second. All right. Been moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation. And I just was flipping back here. There's 17 conditions, I believe. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 11.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 11 is minor planning development amendment PU 23-09. It's to amend an existing planned unit development to reduce the rearward setback of the east property line from 20 feet to 15 feet. The applicant and landowner is Donovan Deborah Sprague. Location of the property is 2092 Meadow Lane. Existing land use is residential with the current zoning of planned unit development. Access is off Meadow Lane. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. So when looking at setback variances, we take a two-prong approach. The prong number one's on the screen, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. Again, the answers are on the screen. It does not appear that it would injure the neighborhood, but it also does not appear that it meets the requirements of a variance under zoning ordinance, as the applicant already has reasonable use of the property, and they could still build a nine-by-14 addition without requiring a setback. And then for prong number two, whether a special condition exists that would grant a variance. A special addition does not exist. The request for a setback is due to a smaller lot size. However, all the lots in the neighborhood have this constraint, so it's not special to the neighborhood. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 2000, and it's on Rapid Valley Sanitary District. This was read around for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicant is requesting to reduce the required setback from 20 feet to 15 feet for a proposed 14-by-20 house addition. The zoning ordinance allows for variance when circumstances prevent reasonable use of the property. The current use of the property is a single-family residence, denying this request would not prevent reasonable use of the property. And number two, the applicant has the option to build a nine-by-20 addition and still meet the required setback. Also, to the north, based off of this plat, the applicant has 28 feet to meet the required setback to the north property line, where an addition could be built that wouldn't require reducing any setback. So with that, staff is recommending denial, or to deny major or minor planning development amendment 23-09. As no special condition exists that would reduce the setback, and the applicant has the ability to build a nine-by-20 addition. If the Planning Commission disagrees, staff has recommended conditions be added.
Questions for Cody? Is your applicant here?
They are, yes.
Okay. Could you please come up? I do have a question for you. And then I'll open it to the rest of the commission.
I'm Deb Sprague.
Thank you, Deb. I'm kind of in a give-and-take mood today about using your property. And I looked, I went by, and I'm sure you're aware, the picture that we see in the agenda versus your adjacency to the neighborhood that you're in. And I guess I do see a problem going to nine feet versus 10, and I'm sure you guys too. You buy your, your construction materials and dimensional things, and they're on two-foot basis. You don't buy a nine-foot two-by-four, but you can buy a 10. You don't have people pour concrete with forms that are nine-foot long. They're 10 or longer. Can you live with 19?
The distance out that we're asking is 14 out. That's what's interrupting, or that's why we had to get the variance. We're wanting to go 14 feet out, so that's taking away five feet of the setback.
14 by 20?
Yes.
And that 14, then, help us out here. Can you get a picture so that she can show us which direction here? Maybe that's where my hangup is.
So it's this portion right here?
Yes.
She wants to come out 14 feet. I think Charlie's asking if you're fine with 10 feet.
Well, I guess, yeah, in this case.
Well, the reason we need a bigger addition, we've moved my mom, who's 87 years old. We just moved her up here from Oklahoma, and we want her to live with us because she needs some care. So we, our house isn't big enough to give her a good space, so we're wanting to build an addition. And that 14 by 20, we've looked it over, and she needs a private bathroom, her handicap accessible, and a nice roomy space because she's, everything she's got is going to be in that room. She's had to give up, you know, you move from place for 50 years, and then you downsize dramatically. So that's why it would really be a help to have it go out 14 feet. That would, that would be a lot of extra space.
Okay, I didn't pick up the 14.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We're talking 20 out and 14, unless I'm confused here, because it's the 20-foot side, unless I'm looking at the, looking at it wrong, it's the 20-foot side that's coming out. It's not the 14-foot side that's the issue. Is that correct?
So, no, it's this 14 feet that's coming out. So she's 20, approximately 29.76 feet from this, from the back of the house to the property line. So if she comes out 14 feet, she needs a 15-foot setback, but the required setback is 20. So she's asking to reduce it by five feet.
Thank you.
Well, again, I'm going to go back to where I started. At least you got me headed the right direction.
I just want you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead, finish yours.
Well, now that I'm squared on this one, I haven't had enough coffee. Now that he says that, I'm like, oh, yeah, that is how you read. Goodness gracious, coffee. Cody, in that area, is there any other home that's right next to their property line or, you know, adjacent, or has had any variances because they're too close to any of the property lines?
Not that I found. This house sits like right at 20 feet, but everything else that I can see in the area besides the sheds, but that has a separate setback, I think, of five feet.
Right.
But from what I can tell, all the houses.
What about the one in the top right corner? It looks like it's real close if you go that one right there. It looks like it's, if you look at that garage, it looks like it's right there on the side. But the side setback is not an issue. It's usually that.
Correct. So this is, this, from here to here is what you're talking about? This would be an eight, required eight-foot setback?
Okay.
The rear setback is what she's requesting to, which is 20 for all of these lots that are in here.
Okay.
And I have spoke with all of my neighbors on both sides, and the two houses in the back, and none of them have any objections to the setback. They, and they signed a letter, just a little note, saying that they did not have any objections I have a question.
Sure. Karen?
This is the letter.
Deb, are you going to lose the deck then? It looks like you have a deck on the back of the house.
No, it would come right up to the edge of the deck.
Okay.
From this back, from the very back corner, it would go right up to the deck.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen. Now I understand why though the 15 instead. I couldn't understand the 20 before. I thought you were billing a 10 by 20. And I'm still in the same mood. I don't see any problems with 10 by 20, and we'll give you something so that you can use it, but I guess it's a given type thing, and I don't think that that's going to be a major thing when you put an addition on, but a 10 by 20 is still a usable size.
Yes, sir, it would be usable, but I sat, we sat down and drew out the dimensions and trying to space mom's furniture around, and that is, it's quite narrow room when you've got, she's got a treadmill she has to use every day, you know, she's, and she has macular degeneration, so she's got a huge TV that she can actually see. It's just, it's not just going to be a bedroom. It's going to be more like a little bedroom, living room type thing. And we could do it, but she is going to be crammed in there, and that extra four feet versus 10 would surely be a help. It would just, it would make it so much nicer for her.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
For an ADA compliant bathroom, how big does it have to be?
My builder, I believe it was a six-by-eight or a six-by-nine. I'm not positive. I have the measurements at home. Sorry, I didn't bring that.
No, that's fine, because that's about 80, not, well, that's, how many square feet is that? Because we're talking, if it's a 20 by nine, that's 180 square feet if my math is correct. If it's 20 by 14, it's a 300 square foot, but roughly 60 square feet just for the bathroom? And that's still kind of small.
And it might be.
Because mine is a six-by-10?
Yes.
And I don't think you could get a wheelchair in it, but I don't know if you need wheelchair requirements or not.
Not just yet, but that's why we're doing it, because it's down the road that we will need a wheelchair. So I'm not, I did not bring the measurements, and we have talked about that. It needs to be handicapped accessible.
Jim?
Chairman? Could somebody tell me what the criteria is for extending an exception in this case? What is our criteria? Do we have some planning criteria? Do we have some way to say we do this in a situation, a situation in which such and such occurs, or conditions are so-and-so? My feeling is that we can recommend not to allow this exception, and I think the county board might disagree. And quite frankly, maybe that's the way it ought to be, but I never hear any criteria, you know, and so that's what I'm kind of searching for.
So the, the criteria for something like this would be those prongs that I saw, or that you, that I put on the board here? Whether granting something like this, this is what is actually in our zoning ordinance for it. This is what we go by. This does stop at Planning Commission though, because this is just a minor planning and development amendment, so it does not go to the Board of Commissioners. It is voted on today.
Thank you, Cody.
And these are terribly subjective. I mean, does it injure the neighborhood? I mean, that's hard to measure. Some people would say, of course it does. It's not consistent with proper planning procedure, and yet it would be hard pressed to figure out how it actually injures the neighborhood in any way. So my inclination would be to say that's kind of a moot point. But I understand that we can't be as precise as we'd like to be. And, but good planning would suggest in my mind not to do this. It's not good planning, you know, because you give one exception, and you get another one, and the next thing you go to a motley collection, and that's not what the applicant's trying to create here. She says it's one exception in the community, and she's, she's correct, but if we act accordingly, then we're saying, you know, whoever shows up and makes a, you know, persuasive appeal, then we should comply with it. So that's my frustration. I think it's almost these, these variances to me are, unless there's some kind of precise criteria that, that's more specific and does it injure the neighborhood, I'm inclined to say let us act accordingly, good, good planning practices, deny this, and the applicant may have to go to the additional time and perhaps expense of making an appeal, but that's going to be moderate compared to, that's my feeling. And I feel that way about all of these sort of things, unless there's some really demonstrated extraordinary circumstances. So that's my.
So I think to answer your question better, so prong number two is whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. This is the really important one. Whether, whether there is generally physical, like narrowness, topography, sighting, or alike, that is where a variance is granted. That, that is what we go by. I understand the situation that the applicant is in, but we're, we're stuck with what our ordinance says. If, if the Planning Commission or Commissioner Lassert knows this, if they, if the commission feels that what the required, why she needs this variance, it meets that. Prong number two, that is the decision of the Planning Commission, but staff didn't see any, any topography issues that would prevent an addition, especially an addition to the north. I know it's not probably ideal for how the house is set up, but you could fit a 14-by-20 addition on that north side of that house.
So you're applying good planning practices, period, according to, you know, what you have here to measure it in terms of criteria. And the applicant finds it inconvenient, understandably. I don't blame her. I'd rather have a bigger bedroom than that, but I don't know if it's grounds to make an exception. I mean, it's not a matter of life and death. It's a matter of, you know, convenience, which then that's not our responsibility in my judgment. I mean, it's just beyond our powers. I mean, we should, I think, act according to good planning practices. Thank you.
Deb, I was going to weigh in on the same thing, but I see it for a different reason. You have some alternatives here. You certainly can make it wider than the 20, but then you're going to change your deck because you said this comes right up. I ran into the same situation in the city of Rapid City with my daughter's house, and they wanted to even extend the basement out underneath the addition because of the, the building that was going on top. So it was quite a, a change from the original design, and they had to come up with some different ways. And I'm having problems doing the same thing. When we do make these exceptions, they set precedent for other people in other neighborhoods, not just this neighborhood, but for other areas. And for that reason, if you have some alternatives, I review them. I'm certainly willing to give you the 10, which is only going to leave 19, but I don't have any problem with that for a setback. But I do have problems if we're going to move at five.
Okay.
That's getting pretty close to somebody's window from the other side who's, who's already sitting at the, appears the minimum.
And we did, we did look into the north side, and they're only, and that's where we originally wanted it, on the north end of the house, but it, it sounded like if you, it would be a huge expense to run a sewer line from the north end. So we took that, our second choice was back there, but.
And those sewer lines do get expensive. I can believe that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the old days of two and $3 a foot are gone.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Deb while she's up? Go ahead.
Make a comment. When I looked at this this weekend.
When I looked at this this weekend, uh, I came away with, well, we're going to deny it. You come up front, you put a face to it. It makes it a lot harder. Because I understand what you're, what you're going through. And it makes it a personal thing. But I'm afraid I have to go on what Jim's saying.
I understand.
You know, so we make the exception for you. Five years down the road, somebody else says, hey, wait a minute, I need that too. It puts us in a spot. I'm afraid at this point, unless like Charlie said, something can be, you know, tweaked around here. I'm afraid I'm going to have to vote against it, have to deny.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Travis.
Two things. First, Cody, I have a question for you. It does appear, and I, and I always understand these satellite pictures. It does appear like right around the corner, uh, 2198 Old Farm Court. Looks like it's actually probably within 10 feet of the back lot line. Did you check that one out just out of curiosity?
No, which one are you, which one are you referring to?
You don't see it on this one. You actually have to go to the regular map and look back. There's a, a structure. It basically has a, it looks like it has a storage shed between the fence and the house. And that's about all the space that's there. It would be around the corner. So it's not too far away. And while you're pulling that up, I, I do know how the, the board, I'm not going to say, I'm not speaking for the board 100%. Typically, when you're looking at taking care of family, especially with the market that we have today, that, that is a potential for leniency as long as we meet everything and say, hey, that only applies to this property. We, we've done variances before where we say it only applies to this property or this piece of the extension and things of that nature. Uh, I'm not going to say one way that the board of commission would consider it. But I do understand the need in this current housing market with the, the way families are moving in together so they can afford. Most people, and I'm, I'm one looking for a house right now for me and my family. And most of the homes on the market are outside of our price range. So to, to say that, well, we've got to move somebody in who, who needs something that's ADA compliant, but only to, to notch it down to 180 square feet. I do think there's some other options. You, you may have to come back with a different floor plan, but it still may not be wide enough, um, depending on what our issues are. But you see which one I'm talking about, Cody? If you come down right, uh, move right there and go down and just go to your, just go to the right, just that one right there. See that? Oh, my picture's way different than that one. Okay. So it all does depend on the, uh, the visuals. Cause mine looks like it's like right up against the fence or right up against that storage shed. So that's what I want to look at. It looks like there's actually more space in between there with the different.
It, year to year, it depends on what the aerials, what they take for the.
No, I just wanted to know if there, if there is another one that could potentially have a variance so we can look into it if, if none of those nearby did, so.
So I, I can tell you that there has been no other, um, that I could find minor planning and development for setbacks for this. It's just the two, um, major amendments that were done in the, in the nineties. If someone built a house that was closer to the property line, it was them doing it without getting the proper.
Without getting the proper. Have you seen that letter from all of our neighbors?
Uh, I did, I did not. I gave it to, to Jerry. We can get copies and we can get it.
Did you do a quick read over? Does it sound like they're all in favor? I mean, are they all okay with that? Cause I, I know that plays a big factor a lot of times whenever the board of commission has to review it. If we're going to make a determination on it, if the neighbors are okay with it. And it, and it makes sense. We, we tend to lean that way. If the neighbors are not okay with it, then you're going to get more of a, no, no, let's, let's walk this back a little bit. In fact, there's one in the valley that's similar to that already.
Yeah, so, so it says, I have no objection to the variance required to build their addition. Please consider this letter of support. And then it's signed by four neighbors. I don't know if you want to show on here which neighbors those are. I don't know which, which ones they are. Yep, that's you. Here, you can just point on here and I can point.
All right. Just we, Kathy's on the right.
Yeah.
And Sarah and Richard are here.
Okay.
Jim and Kendra are here. And it really doesn't bother Winnie and Ron, but they're right there.
Okay. So they have. They have it signed by this neighbor, this neighbor, this neighbor and this neighbor. And we can get you a copy of it.
And Cody, maybe I'm missing something. Is it because it's a full PUD? Is this a PUD?
This is a PUD, yes.
Okay. Cause I'm sitting there going, why are we having to have anything in here to say provisions be made for the maintenance of the community park area? It's because that's.
Yeah, so the only two conditions that staff added, which Commissioner Lassiter will know because he sees variances more than the planning commission. We require that, uh, the applicant get a survey. Then actually it'll show the addition on there that's drawn in by the surveyor to show that it actually needs the required setback. And then, uh, if it's approved, it just says that the rear, rear yard setback for lot 13, our block four would near subdivision be 15 feet. So it's conditions 15 and 16 in the approval are what is specifically added for this, uh, request.
Thank you, Cody. I think you answered my questions.
Anyone else has questions for Cody or Deb?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, right ahead.
The, the first one is I appreciate you coming to us before building. We quite often get these after the fact. Or maybe there's already been a hole dug or something like that. So I appreciate that. The other one is if it sounds like, uh, the board is leaning towards denying this, could we deny it without prejudice so they could continue to work with their, their builder in the planning department to see if they can't resolve this?
I think that's a good suggestion.
Why don't you explain that to, to her?
And Mr. Chair, I was going to ask in that explanation, if you don't mind, um, if she doesn't get a denial or if she only gets a denial, can she appeal? You kind of walked through that process as she's aware.
Yes.
So a denial without prejudice would mean that she could come back with the same application if, if she works on the, um, on what the concerns are from the planning commission. I guess if the concerns are more or that the planning commission doesn't want to give a 15 foot setback instead of a 20 foot setback, I, I don't know what she'd work on with, in, in the meantime. Unless she comes up with a different plan where she can go 18 feet instead of six, instead of 15 feet. If it was a denial, uh, that would be an appeal and that's done through the, the circuit court. So it'd be appealed through that process.
Right, it doesn't go to the board. It has to go to a legal court in, in that case, so.
Correct, yes.
One costs additional dollars, the other one doesn't.
Correct.
So the, the denial without prejudice, she'd still have to pay, is it advertising?
Advertising.
Advertising and, and the letters would have to be reset. And I believe she had 89.
Forgot that. Thank you, Cody.
So.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Deborah, Cody? Chair to address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny without prejudice, item 11, uh, PU 2309.
Second.
Moved and seconded to deny, uh, amendment PU 23 dash 09 for staff's recommendation. Denied without prejudice. I'm sorry, I didn't include that. Discussion from the audience, from the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I'm going to be opposed to this motion because I do know periodically we take in all consideration. Staff is meeting what they have to by our ordinance and they're making a recommendation by our ordinance. However, I do understand in, in certain circumstances, whenever someone's trying to make it so that they could take care of family, is it possible they could make it smaller? Sure, it, it is possible they can make it smaller. You know, I've been in the medical field for 29 years now and I, and I have done home healthcare. I, I think if you're making a facility or even an addition to your home that is under 300 square feet, uh, I, I probably think that she probably shouldn't try to figure out how to get 400 square feet, to be honest. It'd probably make it easier. But ultimately I think it would be very hard to even take care of her mother in 180 square feet if she meant all of the current, um, ordinances. Even if it was narrow, even if we did the, made it, made her make it wider, longer and, and, and shored it up. I think it'd just be a challenge, um, just from my experience. But I'm voting against it, not because the staff didn't do their due diligence. They did their due diligence and they're making a recommendation based on their ordinances. But I do think that, uh, there may be circumstantial circumstances or special conditions to approve it because of, um, the need to take care of their mother who is, um, an individual that, um, needs ADA compliant bathroom and, and living space.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say I agree with Travis. I think if there's ever a, a good reason to approve an amendment, a special, or see, I'm on the wrong one. An amendment, I think this is taking care of family is a good one, but.
Mr. Chair, I agree with that. I, I think that, um, you know, we always say, well, it's going to set a precedence. Well, if the next one that comes in has a precedence that, um, again, is a family member or something like this, I think that four feet difference is really not going to make a big difference in that neighborhood. So I'm going to oppose this also.
Additional discussion. Cody?
Uh, so Cody, secondment planner, I will say that this wasn't advertised for a specific setback. So if, if the planning commission's not comfortable with 15, but they were comfortable with 18, 17, anything in between, they could change condition 15 to match that requirement.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Looks like a tie.
I need a roll call vote.
All right. Go right ahead.
No.
Travis?
Nope.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Three to three.
The only other, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The only other option would be to table this until we have our seventh member here after 10, unless, unless Cody's got a different option.
So that would, that would be an option. The other option would be to make a, another motion. If you would want to make another motion.
Travis, if we did, uh, table it until, um, Kevin got here, we'd have to hear it again because it's certainly within his rights to, to listen to the discussion on the item full force. So, um, that's something to consider too. Anybody got a recommendation they want to?
I have a question for our legal counsel. If we wanted to reconsider this, would we make that motion when Kevin gets here? Or what is your, I've forgotten what proper procedure is.
Sure, Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. Apologies for the voice, I'm just giving over COVID. If you want to table it, um, until Kevin returns at 10 o'clock, um, you can take it off the table. And then propose a different motion or the same motion since.
But we've already voted, right? So.
But the, but the motion failed. So that's kind of cleared out. If you want to make the same motion, um, with an odd number of members, you can make the same motion and revote on it. But this particular motion has failed. So there is no other motion on the table, but you can table the matter until he's back.
I would move we continue or table item PU 2309 until 10 o'clock when our partner in crime is here.
Is it moved and seconded to, uh, table this discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would ask that we put a, maybe, I, I know there's individuals out in the audience, but I don't, I know they, they sat through this once. Can we put it further down, um, maybe at item, uh, 15 and move everything up? That way anybody that was here, they don't have to sit through the whole hearing of it again. It, it's just my friendly request in that motion to table. If we're going to bring it back, bring it back as item 15.
I agree with that as well. I, I have problems why we're not even looking to continuing to the next meeting, give an option for the applicant to take a look. There is alternatives left to this thing, uh, that are available when we're talking about size and where to put it. There's other options you can sit down and deal with, uh, without having either to vote for or against an amendment denying a setback. That's my opinion. I, I don't, rather than waiting for a member, let's continue the thing to the next meeting and look at it again and see if there's any change in thought. But that's my opinion. Anyone else? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, now I want to make sure what we're voting on here.
It's to table it.
Okay, till 10, till Kevin shows up.
Yeah, because it, it's that or reconsider. Normally, uh, it would be easier just to even wait until then. And one of the members that voted, uh, um, either way in this case could vote to reconsider it after Kevin got here.
I just wonder if it wouldn't be a little easier for us to go ahead and continue that to the next meeting. I know that it would be a hassle for them to have to come in again, but.
And vote no.
Yeah.
And vote no.
That would be my point, I guess.
I just want to clarify that, are you guys including the language that's going to be heard after item 15?
It has to be later in. We would, uh, I guess you'd have to look until after item, uh, what's the last item before we go to? It'd be after item 16.
Well, item 16 is county board report, so I would say you could put it right before.
Be 15, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
The other question is, does the applicant wish to stay until another board member comes? Or do you, would you prefer to continue for two weeks?
Okay, any additional discussion from the audience, from the commission? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it Charlie and Mike?
Go ahead and start it off. Yeah. Do you feel comfortable with that or you, would you still?
So who was the two that voted no?
Charlie and.
Charlie and Mike, okay. We're good, okay.
Okay, good. Let's move on. We're on to item number 12.
Good morning. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 12, special consideration to Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development PU 2310 to allow a house occupation for gunsmithing and machining business. The applicant is Forrest Foster. Location is 2788 Leona Lane on 0.21 acres. Zoning is planned unit development district. His existing land is residential. There is no flood hazard on the property. The only interior department review was the address must be posted on residence so it can be seen from both directions of travel on Leona Lane in accordance with Pennington County number, ordinance number 20. Staff performed a site visit on August 20, or 30th, 2023. The applicant has acquired an excise sales tax license. Services will not include activities that involve hazardous materials. And we have not received any complaints or concerns regarding this requested amendment. Staff recommends approval of special consideration to Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development PU 2310 to allow a home occupation for gunsmithing and machining business with conditions. And the applicant is in the audience, if you have questions.
Questions for Christine. Go ahead.
We've okayed things similar to this before. And ATF usually gets in on this somehow. And there's no ATF needed on this at all.
Would you please introduce yourself just for the record?
That, that's a whole piece that's outside of our control.
This is Forrest Foster. The ATF has to verify that the zoning is okay before they'll issue a license.
Correct.
So this will have an ATF license then?
Yes.
Okay. And the other, while you're up here, sir, uh, no onsite premise retail sales. Who do you sell to and how do you do it?
So it'll be to, uh, uh, people that are not located in, in South Dakota or in other states. It'll be shipped to them or delivered by hand at, at, uh, different matches.
Okay, well, that's the only two I had.
Any other questions for Christine or Forrest?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, I was curious about these good things. What, what do you, you say machining. What do you do? I mean, uh, I, I guess I'm concerned about, is there, are there any fumes? Is there any noise? Is there, you know, I mean, and this is in your garage, right? Am I getting this right? Okay.
So it's machining, uh, re-barreling rifles.
Okay, but what kind of noise does that make? What will your neighbors think? And how often do you do this and that kind of thing? Okay, but what kind of noise does that make, what will your neighbors think, and how often do you do this, and that kind of thing, I guess I'm concerned about.
Well, it depends how busy I get, how often I'll do it, but it's not, it's not that noisy.
But this is not, is this a full-time profession for you, I mean?
No.
No, it's just a kind of a sideline, right?
A hobby.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but my only concern would be that, you know, sometimes with these things, I mean, we wouldn't say, oh, it'd be fine to put a machine shop in here. I mean, because the machine shop would be running eight hours a day, I suppose, and there would be noise and much more traffic. But since you say it's only a sideline or, or a hobby kind of, then that's.
Yep.
Yeah, your volume of business is relatively modest.
Yeah, and I, I'm already currently doing this for myself, so there's no, there's no change in that.
Yeah.
You know, no difference in impact to the neighbors.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask staff a question? How many of these types of businesses do we currently have that we've approved? I know we've had a couple of them that are all in residential neighborhoods, roughly.
Morning Commissioner Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director, we have quite a few, I don't have an exact number for you, but I venture to say more than fifty.
More than fifty in local neighborhoods that do the same thing, they're all registered with the ATF, they all have to have their class three, if I, if I remember, license so that they can ship and receive and all that kind of stuff. So there, there's a, there's an intricate process for that, for them to do this, it's, it's pretty common. And I'm a big gun enthusiast myself, so I would say that, you know, with fifty of them operating with no complaints, is it arguable to say that there's been no complaints of any of them? I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, so.
I was going to point out that this is based on a complaint basis, and, and I certainly think we have to give consideration to an applicant when it is because I had a question on noise when it involved machining. But I agree with the commissioner, there are a number of these, I bet we've, we had one that had a complaint that, about retail, and that's the only one I can remember in the last few years that had any complaint whatsoever, so. I, I have a, thanks Forrest for, any other questions for Forrest or Christine? Chair is willing to hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, my motion will be to support staff's recommendation of approving Special Considerations to Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development, PU twenty-three ten, to allow home occupation for gunsmithing and machine, machining business with the following conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, call it Special Consideration, PU twenty-three dash one zero with, my finger will get it, twelve conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, on to item number thirteen. Jason?
Morning.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, is Planned Unit Development Overlay twenty-three dash zero six to allow a recreational resort. The commissioner recalls, this was heard last month on the fourteenth. The applicant is still working through his septic issues with the state. He has made positive contact with an installer who is willing to take on the project, but as of this point, we have not gotten any kind of permitting requests or anything like that. So with that, staff would recommend to continue this item to the October tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission.
Questions for Jason? Chair to address a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move we accept the staff's recommendation to continue this, item twenty-three oh six to the October tenth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue per staff's recommendation overlay PU two-three dash oh six per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, on to number fourteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we discuss fourteen and fifteen together, but vote on them separately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to, to allow discussion on item number, Agenda Item Number Fourteen and Number Fifteen could be, take place together. It should be noted that it will still have to be voted on separately, and it takes the two-third vote of those present at the commission to approve that motion. Any questions? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, we will discuss item number fourteen and fifteen together, discussion only.
Sounds good, Agenda Item Number Fourteen is Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three dash zero eight to change future land use from highway service district to rural residential district. And Agenda Item Number Fifteen is the rezone, twenty-three dash eleven, to rezone three point one-one acres from highway service district to rural residential district. The applicants are Blake and Allison Thompson. Location of the property is two three eight zero seven South Rockerville Road. Property size is three point one-one acres, zone highway service district, existing land use is residential. Access is off South Rockerville Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. On the screen, you'll see the Pennington County zoning designation comparison, so you have the current zoning, furthest to the left at highway service, future land use is also highway service, and the proposed land use is on the right in yellow. Staff does take into consideration current zoning within one-half mile, you can see on the screen, I have those identified. They also look at future land use within that same distance, and those are identified on the screen as well. Staff also looks at roads and streets, we looked at South Rockerville Road, it is a seventy-three foot wide right-of-way, twenty foot of that is paved. Infrastructure was provided by private water and private onsite wastewater treatment systems. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, county highway stated that they only have an approach permit for one of the approaches that they have, but we can square that away with them outside of this meeting. Staff's analysis of the request is that the subject property was created along with lots two and three of Raspberry Oaks subdivision. Those will be the two lots here to the south. Now, there is a guest house on the subject property that was built in nineteen sixty-three, according to Department of Equalization records, and there, it would be considered legal law conforming at this point. So with that, staff would recommend approval of rezone twenty-three dash eleven and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three dash zero eight.
Thank you, Jason, questions for Jason? I just had one, I can't figure out how the comprehensive plan contractor overlooked or missed this one on, when they were reviewing before. Is that something that they just assumed that, because it was along the highway, or whatever?
Yeah, so originally, when those three lots were created, they were subdivided off, and this one was purposely kept, highway service district.
I see, at that time.
The applicant had plans to expand that to be a recreational resort. The subsequent owner, who bought the property about fifteen years ago, didn't even know it was owned highway service, went to get a refinance on it, and couldn't do that because he didn't have a residential zoning district, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of the reason for the request.
Any other questions for Jason?
Uh, I have a question, I noticed there's this guest house, and when you change the designation, zoning designation, doesn't affect this non-conforming circumstance?
No.
Seems odd.
Because it existed prior to the zoning ordinance.
Additional questions for Jason, if not, the chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move approval of CA twenty-three dash zero eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, and we have to do these one at a time, which Kevin, you picked up on already? Amendment, CA two-three dash zero eight per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We need to also vote separately on item number fifteen. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we rezone three point one-one acres from highway service district to rural residential district, RZ twenty-three dash eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, moved and seconded to approve rezone twenty-three dash one, one per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We will need a motion to bring the other item off the table.
We don't have our other commissioner here.
No, but, so I think our second thought will work, we can continue this thing and give these folks some time to work this out. Go ahead, you, you must have more to add, and you certainly, now, but we still don't have it off, we don't have it off the table yet.
So we could take a five-minute break until Kevin got here.
Although Kevin may be like me, he may not show up exactly at ten o'clock. It might be ten thirty.
I'm flexible enough to do what the commission would like, that's what I work for. That and Brittany.
Do we have a cell phone number for Kevin?
Could we, Mr. Chair, could we push through the rest of the agenda, that gives him some time?
Certainly can, you, you voted with the assumption that it would be falling later in the, the agenda, we can certainly pursue that. Thank you, Chair.
Good morning Commissioners, again, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. So item sixteen is the county board report, the Board of Commissioners conferred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the August fourteenth and the August twenty-eighth Planning Commission meetings, with the exception of Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three dash zero seven and rezone twenty-three dash ten for Erin Wells to change to suburban residential, and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three dash zero six and rezone twenty-three dash zero nine for Adam Weaver to change to low-density residential district. These items were approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Brittany, any comments or questions? Mike and I had one, this is, we certainly would understand why the, the variance might be considered sending it back to the Planning Commission after seeing the board's action on those other two. So, that had been voted down, Travis, a number of times with a lot of thought.
Which one?
The, the one that you passed on the last meeting, the rezone and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That's a very small lot in a, in a big area, I guess, is what the Planning Commission thought, so.
Refresh my memory on that one, what is that one specifically?
Um, that was Weaver, that was the one that was off of Stratter Room Drive.
Oh wait, I was, I was not at the last meeting, so I didn't vote for that one. I wasn't there, I was actually sick.
Nonetheless, it was handled, and we'll be looking for the recommendation as to what you do in variances in the future. Thank you.
We're unpredictable at best.
Oh no, you guys, you guys got a tough job, so, I don't know that unpredictable is what I applied to. All right, items from the public. Building permit report is the next one, thank you.
Uh, the building permit report, we're pretty consistent with the number of single-family residences this year as we were last year. Uh, the same number of permits, so we're starting to catch up this year with the number. Our total valuation of structures is greater, the number of permits is lower, so.
Questions on the building permit report? It actually is down quite a few on numbers, but it's not down that much on dollars to me from looking at it. It would appear you're doing your job, and, and it shows the COVID price increases in materials and what's going on.
Interest rates, yeah.
And interest rates and things too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we take item eleven off the table.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded to take item eleven off the table for re-handling.
Mr. Chair, do we get any word back from Kevin, is he coming?
So I, I don't know if anybody has.
Yeah, we're in discussion, go ahead.
Number, um, so Cody's second, I did speak with the applicant. She is, i- if fifteen, if a fifteen-foot setback doesn't work, she was, she's considering, or would consider a, a twelve-foot addition, which would be a seventeen-foot setback, so it splits the difference between the fifteen and the twenty.
We're back to where I started, I, I don't have any problem with that, they're trying to work with us, we're trying to work with them. Any other comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
Vote first.
Oh yeah, we haven't voted, we're on discussion, okay, discussion from the audience, from the commission. Now, this is to get it off the table so that we can take an action, thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
And what were those figures again?
So, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Just what would the setback be?
So the, the setback, she'd be willing to do a twelve-foot addition, she's currently approximately a little over twenty-nine feet from that property line. So if she did a twelve-foot addition, she'd be a little over seventeen feet from the property line. So if the Planning Commission would, is considering that, condition fifteen would change from fifteen feet to seventeen feet. That would be in motion, if, if they were to consider that.
I would move we approve PU twenty-three dash zero nine for a twelve-foot addition, and the change in the condition as recommended by staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve for this, the new setback requirement, approved the latest information. I am pleased about that because then the folks don't have to spend more money even on the, without prejudice. I think that's wise, we, we both give and take. Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. You're welcome, thank you for, for your patience. Items from the membership. I'm speechless, so, I know that'll, Karen's about ready to pass out. All right, chair to address a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, we are now adjourned.